Good evening and welcome to the August 22nd, 2016 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor Weatherly Vernhaus with us from the First United Methodist Church to lead us with the invocation. If you could please rise for that and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening Pastor.
Let us pray. Holy One, God of many names, we give thanks for the beauty of this day and for the opportunity to serve you as we come together to listen to one another, to make decisions for the future of our community. And we thank you for the wisdom of each one who is gathered here tonight and we pray that you will be with us as we listen, as we learn, as we teach, as we decide together, so that your will would be done in this place and in all who live in this beautiful place. These things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the blood of the United States of America and to the Republic where nations stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell. Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Here.
I did not hear from Councilman Campbell this evening, but I believe he corresponded with the city attorney this evening.
Yes Mayor, he did indicate that he may be held up due to business obligations today and he was hoping to make it, but he didn't think that he would.
Well, I'll move that Detroit City Council hereby excuses the absence of Councilman Campbell at the regular City Council Meeting of August 22nd, 2016 due to business obligations.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, that we excuse the absence of Councilman Campbell at the regular City Council Meeting of August 22nd, 2016 due to business obligations. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Yes.
Motion passes. First on the agenda are certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have three this evening. C1 is the Sunoco Pipeline easement, clearing of vegetation with a presentation by Christopher Coop, Sunoco Public Affairs. Welcome this evening.
Thank you sir. Well, first of all, did everyone get the handouts that I had distributed to the clerk?
We did, thank you.
Well, good evening and thank you to members of council, Mayor Slater, for having us here tonight. My name is Chris Coop. I work in local government and public affairs for Sunoco Pipeline. Recently, we had met with Mark Miller and other city staff to discuss some upcoming right-of-way clearing and maintenance activity that we will have coming up as it pertains to the city of Troy. I think that message was well received, but Mark and others thought that it was also important to attend the city council hearing this evening to describe the scope of that work to you all as well. So, we're happy to be here. We thank you for having us. I think what we hope to accomplish in this presentation is to give you a sense of who we are, the nature of our upcoming right-of-way maintenance activity as it pertains to the city of Troy, and also answer any questions that you might have. So introductions, again, my name is Chris Coop. I work in public affairs for Sunoco Pipeline. Also with me here this evening is Lisa Moss. Lisa Moss is our project manager. She's located out of our Taylor, Michigan office. Also with us is John Horgan. John is a senior field specialist with Sunoco Pipeline right-of-way and Steve Shownow. Steve is actually the field agent who will be meeting with local landowners on a case-by-case basis to discuss the upcoming right-of-way clearing activity that we have. So, just a little background on Sunoco Pipeline. We operate over 8,000 miles of pipelines throughout North America. We are committed to safety, security, and environmental stewardship. And really, the right-of-way clearing and maintenance activity that we'll have going on here in the Troy sort of goes hand-in-hand with that philosophy. What I think you'll find in this presentation is that maintaining a clear right-of-way enables us, the operator, to safely operate our pipeline system and that's always our number-one priority as an operator, is safety. I do want to emphasize that we have more than 80 years of experience operating pipeline systems safely across the country. And here in the city of Troy, we operate an eight-inch pipeline that's part of a larger system carrying product from the production regions of western Pennsylvania through Ohio into Michigan, eventually into Sarnia, Ontario, Canada. So, the right-of-way clearing and maintenance program is really an ongoing project and it is. With 8,000 miles of pipelines, there's always clearing and maintenance, side trimming and mowing that needs to take place at some point along those corridors. It promotes the safe and efficient operation of our pipelines by enabling Sunoco Pipeline to meet our complementary objectives of protecting the integrity of the pipeline, effectively responding to an emergency situation, and increasing community awareness of the presence of our pipeline. This slide represents our system in the city of Troy. As you can see, it traverses the northern part of the city and neighborhoods like Glenmore Estates, Wingate and Crescent Ridge. And for the record, you all have a copy of the aerial and road view mapping in front of you. So, the right-of-way clearing and maintenance objectives, they're really geared to facilitate, again, the safe operation of our pipeline system. So, the idea here is that clear access, right, and line of sight on the pipeline enables, one, the prompt response in the unlikely event of an emergency. It also enables us to conduct inspections to detect potential damage or someone staging an excavation. And it also allows for the proper placement of pipeline markers, right, the yellow markers that you see along right-of-ways, along the roads, excuse me, in sufficient numbers so that the physical location of the pipeline is accurately known. And as I'll show you here in a moment, a clear line of sight is not something that we currently have in every section of our pipeline in the city of Troy and that's why this work here in the city is a priority for us and other areas in Oakland and Macomb County as well. So, to provide you with a sense of some of the priority areas that we have here in Troy, these photos were actually taken last week along, excuse me, Fredmore and Houghton Drive. As you can see, there is significant tree encroachment issues preventing a clear line of sight. Also, in many places, there are actually large diameter trees growing near or on the pipeline and I'll explain in a moment why the removal of that type of encroachment is a priority for us. But first, the photo that you see here is an example of a recent reclamation project. As you can see, we have a clear line of sight. You can see the pipeline marker. That's sort of what we're going for. You can also see the product of our restoration efforts here. I would emphasize that it is our goal to work with landowners in order to restore the property to a level that's satisfactory, both to their satisfaction and also that meets the safety needs that we have as a pipeline operator. So, going back to tree root, I'm sorry, to tree removal on the pipeline, in addition to those line-of-sight concerns that we have, clearing of any trees located on or near the pipeline is a necessary priority because root systems from trees can actually wrap around the pipeline itself, causing damage to the protective coating that we have, which can lead to corrosion. That's what we're trying to avoid. We know this because pipeline environments promote tree root development mainly due to greater moisture level in the trench, oxygenated soil, less soil compaction and warmth. The photos that you see in this slide here represent and demonstrate what can happen to the protective coating when those root systems begin to take hold. So, again, this project, what we're doing is really about safety. So, the notification process, and that's really where we're at in this process today, before we begin any maintenance work, Sunoco will first contact impacted landowners via notification. You all have a copy of that correspondence before you, for the record. What we do emphasize in that letter, and I think what you'll find, is that no work will take place along the property until an agent has had a chance to have a personal discussion with the landowner and describe the work to take place, things like tree removal, shrub removal. So, the project schedule, right-of-way clearing and maintenance is projected to begin on or about September 12th of this year here in the city of Troy and it should take about 10 to 14 weeks to complete. Sunoco Pipeline during that process will communicate to landowners to manage expectations, right, that future right-of-way maintenance should be expected approximately every three years as necessary. And just to clarify, you know, once that line of sight is reclaimed and restored, future right-of-way maintenance activity would likely include things like mowing and side trimming. So, that really concludes our presentation. Again, we want to thank you for having us tonight. We look forward to having a safe and effective project here in the city of Troy and with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from Councilman Baker?
I have two actually, but my first one is, I anticipate that we will get asked why you're doing this now.
Sure.
And I'm curious if you can provide some insight on how we should answer that and who we should direct a more thorough, who we should direct the people to that have bigger questions about that because I understand the pipeline's been there a long time and as your picture showed, that looked like trees and growth that had been there for a substantial amount of time, so.
So, again, you know, as an operator, we manage over 8,000 miles of pipeline. Right-of-way clearing and maintenance is a constant and ongoing process. As a company, you know, we're constantly reviewing and evaluating our systems to improve safety and, you know, the fact is, is that any obstruction to visibility along the right-of-way, tree roots that could damage the pipeline are potential safety hazards. So, we have to be diligent and address those issues. I think as an operator, we've identified here in the city of Troy some pretty significant line-of-sight issues and I think it's our goal to address these during this project as quickly and as safely as possible. As far as directing questions to anyone specifically in the company, we will have, Steve Shownow is our field agent, he'll be having those discussions with an individual basis. And one of the things that, you know, we also do during that process to try to help the landowner understand what it is that we're conveying to council tonight, that is the rationale for conducting this type of activity.
And as I understand, I don't think you mentioned it tonight, but there are, you do have an easement on all of these properties already that are built into their deeds, so just so everyone who's, just so we're all clear.
That's right. We have, we have the legal right, we have a legal easement through these properties. That's correct. Yep.
And do you know any idea of the scope of the project? I mean, have you targeted certain areas, like your pictures that, I mean, obviously those people, my other concern is they'll get this letter, not necessarily read it, and then one day there'll be a crew out there.
No, 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 that's, and just to emphasize and go back and to emphasize, we understand that the first thing that happens is a notification letter and it's not like we just send a letter out and then there's crews working on their property. That's, that's the agent's job to go out there, to make contact with those folks and really set up an appointment to try to help them understand what's going on. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Abraham.
You mentioned that with some of the larger trees with the more mature root structure that it puts the pipeline at risk, does the removal of those roots, if they are in fact wrapped around the pipeline, does that present a risk of rupture if they are that entangled?
Right. One of the things, is that a question that either one of my colleagues would want to address? I think the way that I would address that question is, that's what we're trying to avoid here, is those types of, those types of encroachments. In the event that there is, and just to back up, as an operator, one of the things that we do periodically along our pipeline systems is, if, I'm not sure, and pardon my lingo, we use like SmartPigs, that is, we send a device through the pipeline to identify thinning, corrosion, things of that nature. That Smart tool is really our guide for identifying those, those types of right-of-way issues. Actually, back in 2013, we had a full integrity project, that is, essentially we refurbished this pipeline system, performing integrity digs, installing additional emergency flow restrictive devices, pump stations, added layers of safety. It's really the Smart tool runs that we identify those in. That data is about three years old, so the system, as far as a corrosion issue, would not be a factor at this juncture.
Councilman Henderson.
I think I heard Councilman Baker ask this, but I'm not sure if I necessarily heard the answer. Those, in some of those pictures that you showed, those trees look like they've been there for decades.
Sure.
With the size. And then all of a sudden, you know, we want to cut them down and every three years now maintain that line of sight. So, I understand the necessity for that, but what, you know, why was it 20 years prior that wasn't a, an issue?
You know, I think as an operator, again, we have 8,000 miles of pipeline systems. It's a constant, ongoing process. What we've identified here in Troy is an encroachment area. Moreover, the pipeline, the federal regulator that we deal with, that is FMSA, the Pipeline Hazardous Material Safety Administration, has some more specific direction. As a result of that direction, as an operator, you know, we've made it a priority to improve that line of sight and reclaim those overgrown sections here in the city of Troy.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
So, obviously with some of those mature trees, there's going to be some substantial digging. Do you ever shut off the supply of oil while you're doing that if there's going to be, you know, quite a bit of digging around that pipeline?
For that comment, Mayor Pro Tem, I'm going to refer to one of my colleagues, the project manager, Lisa.
Hi Mayor.
Good evening.
Mayor Pro Tem. To answer your question, there's not going to be as much digging as I believe you're under the assumption of. The roots that are going, part of these trees, after the trees are cut, obviously the roots aren't going to continue growing. And we've already identified that at this time, none of the trees are impacting of our pipeline enough to cause an issue. It's just this is, we're trying to take care of it before anything becomes an issue. We will grind the tree sumps down so that they're below grade, but we're not going to be removing all of the roots.
Okay. I'm okay with that, but if there was substantial digging, is that something we can request if you were, had to, so you don't pull the roots out, but I mean, if you had to?
I'm...
You're requesting to remove the...
If you could use the microphone, please, because it is getting recorded. Thank you.
So, if you're going to be digging around one of those pipelines, is that, is that an accurate request, so we can ask for the, for the flow to be shut off while that digging is underway?
And in this part of the, the scope of this project, there's no planned excavation at this juncture.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. I'm sure we're going to get some calls, so, thanks for the heads up.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time this evening.
I think, I think the important point for me is that when, when somebody did purchase their residence, they purchased it knowing that there was a right-of-way on their property, correct?
That's...
I presume so, or an easement on their property for the pipeline?
Right. I mean, in a, in a perfect world, their lawyer, when they went out to purchase the property, did a deed and record search, they should be well aware that there's a pipeline easement going through their property. Does that answer your question, Mr. Mayor?
In the perfect world.
That's, that's the idea and they would also be able to see pipeline markers along their yard. I'd be very surprised if they were, they were completely unaware. Yep.
Councilman Henderson.
So, I'm familiar with easements generally along rear property lines for electric and whatnot. Is, is the gas line or the pipeline going along that same easement or is, could this potentially be further into a property?
So, I guess, if I understand you correctly, you're asking me if, if the pipeline easement is on the back of people's properties?
Yeah. So, so the electric easements typically are, I mean, they form the, the property lines for adjoining properties. Is that always the case with the gas line or not necessarily the case? So, in other words, could you be cutting trees down 30 feet into somebody's yard potentially?
The easement width, to answer your question, is very clearly delineated before we begin any right-of-way clearing or maintenance, right? So, we're not conducting damage off of the actual permanently described right-of-way that we have, but I think the essence of your question is, did we build our pipeline around people's properties? Is that what you're asking? In this case, our pipeline would predate most of the development here in the city of Troy. So, people build around our line.
Okay. All right.
Mayor? I think I'm looking at the map here and I can't be positive, but it does look like they are on the outskirts of property pretty, pretty much, I would say, but Councilman Baker?
I think Councilman Henderson's question was, if they're on the edge of the property and you can go 25 feet in either direction, can you tear down my play structure that's the back of my property, assuming I had one on the pipeline? I mean, is that the kind of, are you going to go into the backyards of people and really...
The priority for this scope of work is the removal of trees, vegetation that can impact the pipeline system. What we, we're not going outside of our, of our easement, the rights that, that we have, but I would, I think the priority that we have is the vegetation removal.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Just one quick question, is this a natural gas or an oil pipeline?
It's actually liquid petroleum gas. It's, it's, NGLs is the transportation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is C2, a resident and business education regarding FOG, which is fats, oil, and grease drain care. I see Paul Trosper, our superintendent of water and sewer here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm here tonight to talk to you about our educational program that we're about to embark on here in the water and sewer division and it deals with fog. And in the sewer world, fog actually stands for fats, oils, and grease, not the stuff that you drive in. So, what did I do? There we go. So, it's one of our biggest challenges when we're maintaining the sewers here in Troy. It's not only just at, you know, commercial food service businesses, it's actually even in residential areas. People, I'm sure everyone here is, at one time dumped some grease from cooking down their drain thinking, a little bit won't hurt. Well, a little bit adds up and people think of grease like maybe oil that you cook with, but all these things up here on the, on the screen are actually considered fog. And these things really should not go down your sewer. So, what happens is it may go down your drain pretty easily, but once it gets down into drains, it cools quite rapidly. And once it does that, it starts to thicken and what happens is it starts to build up on the sides of the pipes. As you can see from these pictures, it can get quite a big mess going quite quickly. It can build up in manholes, it can even spill out of the sewers. And this one here, actually, this picture shows it spilling out onto the ground, but could you imagine if that was in your house? So, what happens at first is it, little bit, like I say, may just build up on the sides of the pipes. But if it just keeps continuing, what happens is it starts to build up almost like a glacier. It just starts picking up every bit of debris that it can and it sticks to it and it just starts to block off the flow to where it can actually create a completely blocked pipe. So, what we're trying to do is teach not only first food service establishments their best management practices and how to avoid this from happening, but also residents to tell them, hey, you don't really want to do this at your home either because if you do this at your home, there's a chance that you could end up with it in your pipes, even in your sewer lead and that's your responsibility and it could cause a problem there. So, in most restaurants, you will find a grease trap that's similar to this one that's highlighted in the red, under the wash sinks. And these things need to be maintained on a regular basis. It depends how much flow they have go through them. And basically what they do is they allow the fats and oils and grease to rise to the surface, allows the liquids to flow out to the sewer like it should, and then they have to take these apart and clean these things out. And on a bigger restaurant, you could actually have something of this scale that's outside of the building and it's the same basic formula, it's just a little larger in scale. So, what we're going to do is we're going to, we have some educational material that we're going to hand out to not only the restaurants, but we're going to mail to the residents in their water bills and tell them that this is something that they can help out with and prevent a lot of this problem from happening in the first place. It's not just here in Troy that this happens. This is a nationwide issue. As a matter of fact, Water Resource Commission is in the same process right now, doing the, trying to do the same thing. So, this is basically the trifold that we're going to send out to the commercial businesses and then this is what we're going to send out to the residents. And we hope that it educates them a little bit and makes them realize that it's a lot easier to dispose of it properly than to just put it down the drain and cause problems down the road. So, is there any questions?
Questions from Council for Paul? Good idea. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Next is C3, a presentation on police officer safety enhancement as a result of comments from council. I see Chief Mayor coming forward. Good evening, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, we're here tonight to give you an update based upon the comments from a previous council meeting. I had this presentation developed with the assistance of Kristen Diag, our emergency management specialist, and Ben Nelms, our police crime data officer. May recall that on July 25th, we had discussion on some of the concerns regarding officer safety issues. It was at a regular council meeting, so we did develop this program for that. Those issues were mainly brought about by the tragedy in Dallas and Baton Rouge, Louisiana, where eight police officers were killed. There were safety alerts and threats that were relayed to our police officers here in Troy and throughout Michigan and Oakland County. Threats of violence towards individual police officers and threats regarding potential ambush situations. We had a diversionary tactic utilized here in Troy on a crime, a high-profile crime that occurred in the southwest part of town where somebody called into the southeast part of town, a crime in progress, attempting to get all of our police officers to go over there. We had many officers respond to the southeast part of town, but we had enough resources available that when the crime occurred in the southwest part of town, we were able to respond to it and apprehend those felons. It's because we have the proper staff that we can do that. There's also been incidents of local sabotage. The Oakland County Sheriff's Office had K-9 vehicles out at a training exercise and someone loosened the lug nuts on their vehicles. And when they left, one of the officers had, one of his tires come off when he was driving. Fortunately, he was not hurt and the other officers discovered that their lug nuts were also loosened up. So, this obviously causes us some concern. We have to point out that in Troy, we have great community support. We have support from our community, support from city management, and great support from city council and we appreciate that. This illustrates on the cards, letters, foods, social media report, and community support by signage that went up around the community. So, your officers appreciate that support. When this occurred, we started doing some immediate actions within the police department. We looked at our station's security, wanted to make sure our station's security was up to snuff and it was. We had a couple minor things we had to look at. We made sure the doors were closing correctly, lights were working correctly, that kind of stuff. The city maintenance staff assisted us, making sure that we had a street light issue that they took care of, so we appreciate that. We made sure that we had two officer cars out whenever possible and in order to do this, we had to implement some immediate overtime for staffing to ensure that we had enough officers to put out two officer cars. So, we had a combination of two officer and one officer cars that went out. We reinforced individual officer safety at the sergeant level with the sergeants reinforcing the roll calls to be careful, going through some procedural issues to make sure that officers were aware of safety concerns and being careful of that. And then, as we worked away up the chain of command up to my level, we put out to all officers, safety concerns and issues and making sure that everyone was aware that they could go home safely at night. We were in process of implementing and planning, coming back to council with an individual patrol rifle purchase program. And essentially what this would do is it would allow officers to utilize a program similar to what the city did years ago with a computer purchase program where officers would be able to purchase and buy back through the city. would be able to purchase and buy back through the city individual patrol rifles. What we would anticipate with this is that increases the care of the rifles, it also enhances what officers put on them as options to make them more individual. This would be something we'd come back to when we start working our way through some of the fine points of that program. I had a survey done with our police officers, and one of the common themes is the police officers in Troy are very grateful for the equipment we have. We don't really feel that we're suffering equipment issues, where we don't have enough equipment. The officers have emergency response kits, which we have illustrated in this picture. We recently bought some rifle-rated armor for each of the patrol vehicles, so officers had that option. And as you can tell from the well-worn ballistic shield there, we have ballistic shields that have been available for years. So we do our best to take care of our officers in this area. We do a lot of training, and our officers are very proud of the training that they do. We do the shoot, don't shoot training, which is another way of looking at de-escalation training, because we go through different uses of force that you can do. We discussed before our active shooter response, we're very proud of that, that's a countywide program. We work with officers on being able to respond to situations where they may have to extricate either other police officers or citizens from areas where there could be hostile fire. And starting August 30th, we're going to be implementing a fair and impartial policing training. This is a program that's taken months to develop, and it's three police departments, Royal Oak, Shelby, and Troy. We developed our own trainers, and we're going to be training all of our police employees on how to recognize and not be involved in implicit bias. So this is a new, relatively new program, and I'm very proud of that. And once we get going on that program, my intent was to do a report to council once we've got that program fully implemented. I ask every police employee to give some input on what they thought would enhance their safety. So this is another way of going back to the people that are on the street and ask them their opinion, those that are closest to the problem, best understand the problem. 107 employees out of 147 employees responded. I'm very happy with that response. We have many on vacation, and many that I talked to said they didn't respond because they knew their peers had already given the answers and they thought it would be a duplication of effort. We identified the three top items. First one was additional personnel. The second was exterior site security. And then the third, most popular item for enhancing safety, was the patrol rifle options. There were many additional suggestions, several of them we already implemented. So there's several things that are relatively easy to do, different ways of locking doors and unlocking doors, some safety issues and that that we already implemented. There's other ones that I'll discuss a little bit later on that we're going to implement in the future that are relatively easy and we can cover within our current budget. The biggest item was personnel. As previously cited, 83% thought we needed more people. So officer safety and workload would support that we need more people. This is my well-worn 60/40 percentage, I've used in many other budget presentations. All this really should illustrate is ideally you want to have your police officers busy up to 60% of the time. If they get busier than that, it tends to decrease their availability for fauna patrol activity and has a negative impact on them. As you can see, we've been above that. We break that down and illustrate it through summer and winter. I don't really need to say anything more than that, we've all been through that before on that program. So what we're looking at is two options at this point, taking budget into consideration. One would be to add one sergeant and four police officers. You see, that comes in at about $600,000. And the second one, which is my preference, would be is that we had six police officers. We currently have three shifts. If we had two officers to each shift, that will allow us to increase minimum staffing per shift by one officer. It's a very boring mathematical process that you can go through to illustrate why it takes more than two, to make sure you have one on there. Mayor Slater went through this at Staff and Command School, it's the shift relief factor, and it's a mathematical equation I hate to go through. But in order to have one on, you have to have 1.6 police officers available. So if we can't hire 0.6, we have to round that up to 0.2 police officers, to make sure you have one on duty at all times. If we do this, we'll be able to have a good combination of single and double police cars on every one of those three shifts. Now, a question that I'm sure a lot of you will have is, what is our minimum staffing? Staffing is something we don't discuss in a public forum, because the aforementioned diversionary tactic, if somebody knows that they draw all of our police cars to one side of town, they count them up and they know how many are there. We're obviously defeating the purpose, so we don't discuss minimum staffing levels. The other item is exterior security, and this is overwhelming, that the police officers and employees, we're looking to have our parking area fenced in to offer security. The proximity to our court offers us the advantage of a very short distance to take prisoners that we arrest and walk them over to the court. The problem with that is once they bond out, they're walking back through the police department or back through City Hall proper to get out to Big Beaver and perhaps get a ride. What that does is it allows them the opportunity to observe our operation, walk through the off-duty vehicles, the personal vehicles of the police officers and police employees, as well as walk through our police parking lot, where our people are equipping the vehicles and getting ready. Doesn't really enhance their sense of security. If we were able to fence that off, that would improve the security in that area. So we're looking, this is an estimate we obtained, it's an estimate, not a bid, about $150,000 to fence off that area that's in red there, which would take care of all three of the parking lots. As I mentioned, there were many other comments regarding security enhancements, things like improving our access control to the building and the site, opaque windows to not allow people to see into the building as easily, and increasing lighting. As I said, these are items that we can take care of through the regular budget process, and I wouldn't go through those piecemeal here. There's many other suggestions, they're all good, and we'll work on those. What's important, and is very important to us, is that we continue to balance the security of our police employees and our community outreach programs, and the community outreach that we do. We're very proud of that. We don't want to go so far in the other direction, that we have totally secured the building for police security and safety, but we're not reaching out to the community that pays us. So we're very well of that challenge, we're very well aware of that challenge, and it's constantly in my mind, I want to make sure that we don't go in that direction. So we've got to balance those two out. So we have to have the community engagement as well as the police officer safety. So we're aware of that, I know that you know that we're aware of that, and we're going to continue to strive to be a community-oriented, problem-solving police department. We're not going to become militaristic.
That concludes my prepared comments. I'm ready to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief. I think I'm the one that kind of brought this up and probably made more work for you than was necessary, maybe, but I, when I brought it up, I more wanted the police department to know and the administration that we're here to help if we can, not knowing what you, what you need, but really let you know that we're here to help, understanding the situation that you face today. So I was looking at it more as a, what can we do immediately to assist and help with funding if needed be, needed to be? When we went through our, our days of having to cut staffing, you know, it was always our hope that we could bring that staffing back up over time. I'm certainly not against hiring more officers, I'm a proponent of that, but I was looking at something that we could do immediately, because the threat is immediate. And, you know, just from my perspective, I think putting security around the building seems like an immediate action that hopefully we can help with. In today's world, you don't even know who's walking through your parking lot anymore, and they got this darn game out there going on where people are congregating in parking lots, and you don't even know why they're there, looking for some kind of Pokemon or something, I think. So I would certainly, from my perspective, support additional security around the building as an immediate. And as a long-term goal, it's always been my long-term goal to add staffing, so I wonder if there's any other comments from council. Councilwoman Hoderick?
This fencing idea, I get it. I can remember working here and seeing how very visible that is, and I agree. If that's an immediate step we can take, that seems reasonable and rational and pragmatic. It needs to happen, and no better time than now, I would think. And I agree with you on the staffing. You have my support on that.
Mayor Proton Pennington?
I think staffing is of the utmost importance because you have two officers in a car, and you've got some guy that may or may not be on the edge of doing something. If he sees two officers, chances of him doing that are less likely. And he doesn't know, you know, which car has two officers and which does not. I would be in support of that, and sooner than later.
Councilwoman Abraham?
I fully agree with the fence. The sooner we can get started on that, to me, the better it would be. In regards to the extra officers, Chief, I would defer to you on which is the better option. And if you're saying option two is preferable, you have my support. I definitely see it, you know, as a long-term goal, you know, next year's budget, but I wonder if, even though we've approved strategies for this year, is there any room for relooking at this year's budget and making adjustments to offset potentially getting officers sooner rather than later? So I don't know how possible that is, I don't know how feasible it is, but it's something, you know, to me, this is paramount in terms of importance, and I'd rather have the officers and that fencing sooner rather than later.
Thank you. I think over time and upping shift minimums is a great short-term goal, but I think as we all know, you can only ask so much out of your staff when you start working six or seven days in a row and double shifting and stuff like that. So, once again, I'll ask City Manager Kishnik, is there something you need from us to, it sounds like there's consensus at least, to immediately do something about the security fencing, and maybe to expedite taking a look at adding staffing?
So the fencing is the easiest one in terms of financial policy, because the fund balance policy states that it's for one-time capital expenditures. So the fencing is very easy and in accordance with the fund balance policy. So you would just need to make that resolution tonight or bring something back since it's just an estimate, however you want to do that, it's the council's decision. If we're looking at 600 to 700, what was it, $600,000 to $700,000 in recurring costs, that's not in accordance with the fund balance policy, because it's not a one-time expenditure. So the good news is Tom Darling, Fiscal Services Director, has the year-end all done for 2016, December, July, June 30th, 2016, but he is close to getting that done, to be quite frank about it. So after we have those numbers, then we can look, and we can also look in the chief's budget to see where there could be some savings. And we can do that, you know, within two months.
Well, I think it's pretty easy for me. I'd like to move a resolution to provide funding for a security fence as deemed necessary by the chief mayor.
Support?
Moved by the chair and supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we provide funding for a security fence as deemed necessary by chief mayor. I know there was $150,000, maybe not to exceed $200,000.
We'll come back with a formal bid and budget amendment at that time. So you probably don't want to put a number on it right now because it's just a, just an estimate. So let them go get the bids on some real good security fencing, and then we'll bring it back with a budget amendment.
Sounds good. And then we'll wait to hear from Mr. Darling about potential assistance for adding staffing. Any discussion on the resolution? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes?
Thank you, Mayor.
Please let us know if there's anything else that we can assist you with. I know from past experience that one-man cars, for some reason, have statistically been safer than two-man cars, but I think the world is different today. Some of the stuff that I'm reading, some of these cowards are looking for one-officer cars. So I think that statistic is old, personally.
Very good.
Thank you. That concludes certificates of recognition and special presentations. There are no carryover items this evening or public hearings. So next on the agenda are public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, and I will call on David Ashland, Troy resident, who wishes to speak Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I've read this document both in the pre-release version that was available last Friday and in the final version that's available today on the website. To me, this document is worded more like a typical job description with specific responsibilities rather than being worded as a plan of action. The items that are listed seem to me to be typical management responsibilities, typical responsibilities. They should have been in effect since the beginning of the city manager's tenure, not simply being now identified as a plan of action. They should always have been there. I guess in summary, I would say, a plan of action at this point should be more specifically directed at the manager's most recent conduct or misconduct, not a list of general job And as a side issue, the grammar and wording of this document is poor, and in many cases very ambiguous concerning interpretation. We need more clarity and more specificity in this document. I bring this up because I read tonight in the amendment, I think it's the second whereas below, that it was presented by the city, by the city manager on, I think, July 25th, but not yet approved by council. Two whereas's later, it says, let's approve it tonight. And then there's maybe a closed session associated with this, I'm not sure. But I think a final version that reflects all of your thinking should be presented to council before a vote is taken. I may be wrong on this, but it sounds like we're taking a premature vote. I could say more about the specifics in the plan of action, but I've only got three minutes here, so I won't go into that. But if anyone would like me to point some out after the meeting, I'd be more than happy to do that. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. That's not the format that we have for asking questions. Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up for public comment on items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. Is there any reply from council this evening? There are no postponed items, so we will move to regular business. Our first order of business is I-1 board and committee appointments, and I have the pleasure this evening of appointing Mr. Ballarmen to the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the term that expires 4/30/2017, and Samir Bhagri to the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the term that expires 4/30/2018. So I will move those appointments. So, I will move those appointments.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we appoint Mr. Ballarman to the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the term that expires 4/30/2017, and Samir Baghri to the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the term that expires 4/30/2018. I would just like to point out that Samir Baghri is here this evening. If I could just get her to stand and be recognized, and Ms. Ballarman? Okay. I thought you were here this evening. Thank you. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for volunteering. We have one city council appointment this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolved that City Troy hereby appoints the following persons to the serve on the board, Parks and Recreation Board. It's Gary Huff for the term expiring 7/31/2017.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Proton Pennington, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we appoint Gary Huff to the Parks and Recreation Board for the term that expires 7/31/2017. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you again to Gary Huff for volunteering. Next, I-2 are Board and Committee nominations. I have, hopefully, I'm going to be able to fill up the Global Troy Advisory Committee this evening with nominations. So, I will nominate Lisa Baika Godsky, Radzky, to the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the term that expires 4/30/2017. Navida Buris to the same committee for the term that expires 4/30/2019. Ty Chan to the same committee for the term that expires 4/30/2018. Richard Kuhn to the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the term that expires 4/30/2019. And Daniela Nachiva to the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the term that expires 4/30/2019.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Baker, that we nominate those that I listed on the record to the Global Troy Advisory Committee. Discussion.
Mayor? Sorry, Mayor? There's also a council member term as well. I didn't know if you were prepared to make that as well.
I would like to do that, but I was hoping it would be me, and I didn't know if I should do that or speak to somebody on council to. I'm not looking to do it permanently, but I thought I would like to be on it to start. So, if a council member would like to nominate, I'll take care of that tonight also. Councilwoman Hoderick?
I would nominate Mayor Slater to the Global Troy Advisory Committee as our council representative.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Hoderick, supported by Mayor Proton Pennington, that I get appointed to the Global Troy Advisory Committee as the city council member. Discussion on any of those nominations. Councilwoman Hoderick?
I just wanted to comment how much I appreciate that you brought this committee. This was part of your State of the City address at one point, and it's really important to our community. This is one of our strengths, is our diversity. Just went to a ribbon-cutting last week here on Big Beaver, major development, and the people making the investment commented about how much they appreciate the diversity of this city and that they see it as a strength for the community presence, for their investment. And this is a really important priority, and I'm glad we've embraced it, and I'm glad we're moving forward with it.
Thank you. I would also like to recognize Eleanor, I think she just ran out of the room because I might have made a mistake or something, but special thanks to Eleanor. She's been my assistant on this, and without her, I couldn't have even begun to complete this nomination. So, thanks to Eleanor. City Clerk Dixon?
Mayor, just to be clear, there's only one vote that's needed because since this is a mayoral nomination board, the council kind of informally nominated you, but the vote would actually be on you as well as everyone else. So, that would be one vote just for everyone.
One vote for everyone. Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? We'll take one vote then. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thanks to all of those that have volunteered. We're going to get this committee going as soon as possible, as soon as we can do the appointments next council meeting. So, thank you. Mayor Proton Pennington?
Yes, I have one nomination, Mayor, for the Volunteer Firefighter Incentive Board. I'd like to nominate Councilmember Henderson. Thank you.
Is that a city council nomination or a mayor? There's both?
For the VFIT Board, sorry, the Volunteer Firefighter Incentive Plan Board, the council member is actually nominated by the council, but the mayor gets the rest of the nominations.
Got it. I got that one, but.
Okay. Moved by, I forgot who seconded.
It was me. So did I. It's a long pause.
Moved by Mayor Proton Pennington, supported by Councilman Baker, that we nominate Councilman Henderson to the Volunteer Firefighter Incentive Plan Board. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Proton Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes, I think.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thanks for volunteering for that. There is no closed session requested at this time, so we will move to I-4, the Master Plan Update. Approval of Draft Master Plan, and I see Brent Savadant, our Planning Director, along with Ben, are here this evening to give us an update. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Slater, City Council. As you indicated, Mr. Mayor, to my left is Ben Carlisle. Ben is a planner with Carlisle-Wortman Associates, and Carlisle-Wortman has helped us update our draft master plan. And in the spirit of teamwork and partnerships, I invited Ben to be a part of the presentation this evening, in part to recognize the efforts of Ben and Carlisle-Wortman Associates. He graciously accepted, so he's here. He'll be presenting the second half of this presentation. In 2008, Troy adopted the first comprehensively updated master plan in about forty years. And as per state law, every five years, you must make a finding whether this plan is still relevant. So, in 2013, the Planning Commission made a finding that it was in pretty good shape. Needed to be fine-tuned a little bit, but it was in pretty good shape. So, in 2013, we commenced the efforts to update the master plan. And it's taken us a couple of years, three years, maybe a little bit more than a couple of years, but we're at the finish line this evening. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item in June, unanimously recommended approval of the document, and the city council has the authority to consider the approval of the document this evening and hopefully adopt that document this evening. So, the focus of the updates, we updated demographics and we updated the housing priorities, and we also added four special area plans, one for Maple Road, for North Troy, for Rochester Road, and for Big Beaver Road, as well as updated, any outdated information that was in the document. So, the table of contents, we've really only modified chapter, added chapter eight and chapter ten. The rest of the structure is very consistent with what was approved in twenty, 2008. There was a significant amount of public engagement throughout this process. That actually added to the length of time it took to amend the plan. We kicked it off at the real estate forum. We held a Move Across Troy Symposium to focus on the Big Beaver pedestrian improvements, a high school forum, a neighborhood association forum, a boomer and shaker forum, numerous planning commission meetings, and a planning commission public hearing. So, there were some common themes that kind of ran through all the public engagement we had. We were told by residents and attendees at these public forums, we needed to consider density in strategic locations and also provide more housing options. And you'll hear me talk a little bit more about that in a few seconds here. Also, protection of existing single-family residential neighborhoods. It was important in the existing plan in 2008. It continues to be important moving forward. And we were also asked to provide more transportation options and strengthen walkability throughout the city. So, in terms of housing and demographics, three major findings. Troy is aging, household types are changing, and preferences are evolving. This is a very important slide. By 2035, which really isn't that far down the road, for the first time in the city's history, there'll be more seniors than people that are under eighteen years of age. What does this mean? It means that housing types are changing. You've got a bar chart, very simply, in nineteen sixty, about half the, about half the households in the city did not have children, and that's continuing to increase, and it's going to continue to increase to about 2040, where it looks, where about a quarter, a quarter of the population will not have children, excuse me, will have children. Seventy-five percent of the households will not, will not have children. In terms of one-person households, again, this graph shows you how much that has increased, and it continues to increase in terms of the percentage of households that are only going to be one-person households. This is a pie chart showing housing types in 2010. Seventy-two percent of our housing types here are single-family detached. Twenty percent of our housing types are multi-unit apartment. These are the, at the two ends of the spectrum in terms of, in terms of density and intensity. Only eight percent is that middle portion. And I'll get, I'll get to that in a second, but that's the missing middle that I'm going to be talking about in a few slides. What does this mean? The city's housing stock is not representative of the anticipated future population. It's an important concept. Our priorities for, for housing moving forward and identified in the plan is focusing on aging in places and focusing on that missing middle. So, what is aging in places? We all know what aging in place is. In terms of aging in places, we look at three different spheres, or three different components. Housing, which is where we live, our physical home, our neighborhood, our community. Social engagement, our social relationships, like friend and fam, friends and family, where we worship, where we meet formally, where we meet informally, where we hang out. And well-being, our mobility, our welfare financially as well as in terms of health. And when there's a balance between these three spheres, that's a, that's a place where seniors and people that are aging, they want to live as they age. That's the concept of aging in places, and we want to strengthen that for the city of Troy. But here's that spectrum I talked about. I mentioned before, seventy-two percent of our existing homes are at the low end of the spectrum in terms of density. Twenty percent is here. This is the missing middle. Again, we've only got eight percent of our housing stock here, but I, but we hear at the planning department almost daily, the need for introducing more housing product that has characteristics like walkability, transitional density, smaller, well-designed, newer, de-emphasis on parking. This is what we need more of in the city. What do these look like? They look like this. Missing middle housing can include attached single-family, fourplexes, townhomes, live-work units, or apartments. And this is identified in the plan. And now, for the second half of the presentation, I'd like to introduce Ben Carlisle.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Savadant, and good evening to the mayor and to the council. Director Savadant discussed a little bit about the process, but I want to reiterate the actions the Planning Commission went through to get to this point. When we started the discussion of updating the master plan, the Planning Commission took a long, hard look at the existing master plan. And if you remember, that was done in 2008. We were in a much different time than we are now. Luckily, we're starting to get closer to where we were in 2008, but we took a big dip in there, and so we really want to take a long, hard look about where we are in relation to the master plan. And after further study, the Planning Commission came up with the thought and the conclusion that the master plan is in pretty good shape. It really does reflect the current goals and policies. However, where we did note that it was hardest hit based on the change in the economy was really in those economic corridors we have, the Big Beavers, the Rochesters, the Maple Roads, not so much the single-family residential, but really those economic drivers for the city. And so, the focus of the update was to really look at, look at some special areas in the city and really focus on specific land use recommendations for those particular areas. So, we focused on four areas. That includes Rochester Road, Maple Road, North Troy, and the last one was Big Beaver Pedestrian. And we focused on Big Beaver Pedestrian for transportation issues, but the first three were really focused on land use and economics. And the focus of these plans were very action-oriented, very targeted, and short implementation policies to make quick change. And you'll see that as a constant theme throughout the four plans. All the plans have a very similar and exact format. They start with a background introduction and existing conditions. Basically, what you want to do is identify through a snapshot of where we are today. The second thing it leads into is a vision statement. This is a statement about where we want to be. And lastly, was priorities, strategies, and actions, which ultimately leads to implementation. How do we get to, how do we implement strategies to get to where we want the vision statement? Our timeframe for these plans are very short. It was five to ten years. We want to make sure we make quick improvements in the, in the near term. Most master plans look twenty years out. These special area plans really focused on quick actions that we can do to make quick changes. So, I'm going to quickly highlight the four plans very quickly. Obviously, there's a lot more depth in the, in the plan itself, but we can go into that if you have more questions. The first plan we focused on was Rochester Road. And the area we focused on was specifically that commercial area between Big Beaver and Waddles. And the reason we focused on that is obviously the Planning Commission, as well as the council, is aware, there's been some recent development on that corridor, which has created some friction between the residential and the commercial. So, we wanted to look at redevelopment as a whole along Rochester Road. And there are really three themes that came out of that process. The first was, the first priority was to enhance the image and identity through private investment and public-private partnerships. The second was to improve access management, and the third was to approve, to preserve the adjacent residential character and encourage compatible development. You'll see a theme through all of these priorities for Rochester Road is really focus on the opportunity for redevelopment. And the opportunity for redevelopment allows us to address these three priorities. In terms of the first one, if we can encourage redevelopment, we can get a better-looking place, a more character in the place, as well as improve the public realm, which is the streetscape and the, and the landscape, et cetera, along Rochester Road. In addition, if we can get redevelopment, we can improve access management from both the vehicular perspective as well as pedestrians' perspective. And thirdly, is if we can encourage redevelopment, we can also ensure that we protect adjacent residential properties with commercial properties by ensuring there's enough buffer and landscaping. So, those are really the priorities of Rochester Road. The second area we focused on was Maple Road. In terms of geography, this was the largest area that we looked at. We all, we looked all the way from the western boundary of the city all the way to John R., John R. to the east. And the priorities focused on this were really to generate investment at the nodes, encourage entrepreneurism, entrepreneurism and redevelopment, as well as strengthen the segment between the major mile roads. The plan really recognized that there's an existing unique nature of Maple Road. It's eclectic. We use that term a lot. So, we want to enhance that creativity and really create a spirit of entrepreneurial, entrepreneurialism along the corridor. So, this includes everything from encouraging more mixed use, better transit options, as well as utilization of vacant or underutilized parcels. As we all know, there's a lot of parcels right now, especially in the IB district, which is more the southern end of the corridor. That's just underutilized industrial space. We want to reutilize some of that space for more economic purposes. The third area that we focused on was North Troy. North Troy is the area, the office, the office area in the high employment area along Crooks, Long Lake, and Seventy-Five. As we all know, this is one of the highest employment and office areas in the city outside of Big Beaver. And so, we recognize that the change in- And so, we recognize that, um, the change in that is, is not, uh, we still want to maintain it as an employment office center, but we, we want to add additional amenities. And one of the conversations we had with both employers and employees in that area is they like working there, but they don't appreciate the fact there are no amenities to go to. They can't walk anywhere to go to lunch. They can't walk anywhere to get their daily services. They, they don't have anywhere to walk within the campus area. So, we want to build on the strength within the existing fabric that's there. And so, this includes just more amenities, such as provide more compatible mixed uses, improve multimodal circulation and safety, and last, inspire creative placemaking. And placemaking is a term that you hear a lot. You'll hear us say a lot. You'll hear other people say it. And it's as simple as providing food carts at lunch to as complex as making public art and wayfinding signage, a priority in that area. So, we, there's a whole scale of what you can do for placemaking to create a more attractive place. And finally, was the Big Beaver, um, Move Across Troy Symposium. The council spent a lot of time on this. This has been vetted by the council and actually adopted by the council. But what we're doing tonight is by introducing it as part of the master plan, it will be incorporated as part of an element of the master plan, so it can be weaved into all the, uh, recommendations that are found in the plan itself. I, I do also want to, before we go to questions, I do want to, on the, on behalf of the staff, I do want to thank the planning commission on their work on this. They spent three long, hard years working on this plan. Um, and I do want to recognize the chairman, Mr. Edmonds is in the audience tonight, so I do want to publicly recognize the planning commission for their work. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Questions from council? Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Well, it's an interesting, well-written, uh, plan. I mean, I, I just joined council when, when this was, when this was brought up, um, three years ago. And, uh, so, I was new to the, you know, the whole idea of looking at the master plan. And so, I got to study it this time, and, uh, and, uh, it's very well-written and actually entertaining. Um, I liked the chapter on the high-density housing. Um, it's a, it's a comment that comes up to us constantly. And, uh, it was funny that, that the Gazette, you know, I hate to quote the press, but the Gazette hit the nail on the head. There's a headline that said, uh, you know, "Everyone Wants High Density Housing, But Not Near Them." So, it's a, it's a great idea. We just have to nail it down somehow.
I also want to thank the planning commission. I know, um, they put a lot of time and effort into this, and they make it easy for us. Because when it gets to us, it's pretty much done. And, um, Mr. Edmonds, on behalf of the council, please, um, let the planning commission know that we appreciate their work and their hard work. It's not an easy task, I know. Councilwoman Abraham.
One of the themes, um, that you highlighted in tonight's presentation is walkability and connectivity of neighborhoods, um, whether it's sidewalks or trail or whatnot. In the past year, it seems like there's been some discord, um, with, uh, longtime residents with older neighborhoods being connected to newer neighborhoods. You know, last week, we had, um, some citizens from the Waddles development. Last year, I think we all remember Tucker Street very well. Um, you know, can you, can you just talk a little bit about, um, the, the benefits and also what, um, what type of outreach there is between, uh, the developers of the new neighborhoods with the old neighborhoods, and what options there are to, to come to a mutually beneficial solution?
With all applications, we encourage every developer to reach out to the neighbors and have dialogue, open dialogue and listen. And, um, you know, planning is about striking a balance. So, this is a policy document. It's implemented through our zoning ordinance, and it's, it's implemented through the actions of, of our planning commission and our city council. And sometimes that balance is difficult. And just like Mr. Pennington indicated, I think everyone here, everyone in the city recognizes, um, housing options, and everyone recognizes the importance for walkability. Um, when these projects are in people's backyards, uh, it, it gets to a personal level. And, and, and there's a, I can, I can certainly, I certainly have empathy for these people that are affected by these developments. It's, it's difficult, and, and it's the job of, uh, of staff and planning commission and council to find that balance. And that's where the, the policy document comes in handy, is, is you, you look at all the thought that went into the, into the, into the master plan and, and the reasoning for it, and you try to make the best decision that's going to balance the, the good for the, for the public, a- as well as the property rights of the neighbors that are impacted. It's a tough balance.
Thank you.
It is a tough balance. I do have the opportunity to go out and talk to developers, and I'm trying to encourage, um, density, uh, along the Big Beaver corridor. And would you, would you have to, the toughest part of the battle, in my opinion, it's, it's much like the Amber Apartments on the corner here. Somebody has to be first. And typically, when somebody's first, it encourages future development. Uh, the only reason that I really voted for the Amber Apartments is that I thought it would be a catalyst, uh, for, for similar development. I want us to keep moving forward with density along Big Beaver because I think we just need somebody to come in and start, and it will, it will take off. And I know there's a development, uh, in the works right now. I just think we, we, we have to get somebody that's willing to come in, invest their dollars in our community, and it will then take off from there. I know the project next door, um, at 888, part of that project is to put some high-density housing in there. And from what I hear from that developer, this is a booming market right now for those type of developments along Big Beaver. So, we, we have to keep encouraging it. And I understand it's a fine balance, I do. Any other comments? Uh, Councilwoman Hoderick.
Um, for those who are watching, maybe tuning in to the master plan idea for the first time here tonight, one of the, one of the great things that the document does is it does cast a vision. Helps us to look forward, helps us to look at, you know, what do we want this to look like and feel like going forward? And, um, the placemaking discussion throughout, um, was just terrific. And, um, I think that's the piece, we hit that downturn, and we, we lost momentum on that. In fact, we even took some of our placemaking away to save money. Um, the, the classic flowers in the median, where did they go discussion that comes up over and over again, at least to me. But, but know that, um, residents who are watching, um, that those ideas aren't gone, that they continue to be part of this document and, um, a very important piece of it, um, along with the walkability and whatnot, just, and it helps us strike that balance in terms of keeping that character of our city, um, while still encouraging development. Those decisions are very tough, and I, I was really struck, I had a resident who called me today, who, who'd been watching planning commission meetings and ZBA meetings and, and our council meetings. People are engaged and they, they do get it. And I appreciate the members of the public who participated, and I appreciate all the great work that, that you folks did. And it really is a solid guiding document. Um, anyone trying to understand kind of that big picture of Troy and where we're trying to, what we're trying to keep, where we're trying to take it, it really is a great tool for that. And I would recommend, um, I would, I would recommend this book. It's a great one.
Would you like to move the resolution?
Sure, I'll move the resolution.
I four.
I four as printed?
Support.
By Councilwoman Hoderick, supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we approve I four, the master plan update, which is the approval of the draft master plan as printed in the agenda. Further discussion? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you again for all the hard work. Next is I five, the standard purchasing resolution eight, best valuable award, website design services. I see Stephanie Fleischer, our marketing coordinator, is at the podium. Good evening.
Hi. So, my name is Stephanie Fleischer. I am the marketing coordinator at the city of Troy. Um, my fellow website committee members and I are very excited about the city website project. Together, our group has worked on narrowing, narrowing down the proposals, and we feel that we've made the best decision. You saw a preview of the project at the 2016 retreat, um, where it was identified as a strategy, and it was number two. Um, and it's a huge step forward in effective communication for the city of Troy. Uh, the website also is highlighted in the 2016, 2017 budgeting process. So, why are we doing this? Um, it's an effective communication tool, as I said. Uh, the city needs a website, uh, with easy-to-find content, so anyone seeking knowledge about Troy, Michigan, whether it be information on trash pickup or actually moving here, um, it's easily found and accessible content. Um, and it's a huge step forward in the marketing plan and the new creative. Uh, as mentioned, you did see a brief preview of it at the 2016 retreat. Um, but it's a very large step in, um, rolling out the city's new look for 2017 and beyond. Um, and we're in need of an upgrade. With the completion of this project, the website will be fully functional on mobile, tablet, and desktop platforms. Uh, and to go into further detail about the website upgrade process, um, I'd like to introduce Mr. Joe Nagrant, uh, from Revised Software.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you very much. Um, first off, uh, Revised is extremely excited to have this project. As you may know, we're a local business as well. The other great thing is we're known nationwide for doing this type of work. So, it's, it's great for all of us here. Thank you so much for considering us. A little bit about Revised. We've been building government websites specifically for over 20 years, along with what's called a government content management system. What that means is it's specifically for government, for non-technical government staffing, so they can do the updates themselves. We currently have over 1,200 government clients nationwide. And when we looked at your website, there's a couple of things that came to mind that came out of the RFP. I do have to congratulate Ina and her staff and Stephanie and her staff for putting together a great, concise RFP. When we looked at it, it was like a hand-in-glove type of project for us. So, I just want to give you a very quick overview of what we're looking at. Number one, we're going to put in what's called a state-of-the-art design. This encompasses a lot of different things. As Stephanie indicated, it'll have technology in there, so when someone comes to the website, they'll automatically know what device they're on, what size screen they're on, and it'll make a perfect presentation. They won't have to zoom on in. They won't have to be, you know, squinting. Uh, they won't have the little scroll bars to get information. They'll be productive on there. What we're seeing in this area, over 54% of residents are now coming to municipal websites just on the smartphone, not computers or iPads, just on the smartphone. So, it has to be productive. Number two, we're going to build what we call a self-government website. This will be a website that when people have questions or thoughts or ideas, rather than inundating the city with phones, calls, and emails, they're going to start coming to the website. I'll show you some examples of this in a little bit. We're going to put in features that really will be used by everybody, not just the residents, but also city staff as well. We'll put in what's called resident engagement features, so they can get updates of what's happening on the website without even visiting the website. They can set alerts, they get email alerts when certain pages are updated. And the last item is, we're going to put a lot of coding in there to help with when people are just surfing with the Google search bar. They type in municipal incentive for company relocation. And you'll have a higher search engine attraction to a specific page of that special program that you have. Maybe it's for high-density housing development. And they'll be pulling it from other areas of the United States to that page. So, we're going to be putting search engine optimization features that your staff will also be able to enhance and get a higher search ability to these specific pages. So, the whole idea, it's going to be a self-government website with open transparency for the residents, but it's also going to help with your economic development strategies and bring more people to it. I know this sounds a little bit crazy and stuff, but the technology is here to do it, and we're doing it for other municipalities, and we love to do it for Troy. I'd like to show you some examples right now. So, this is a website we did for Logan, Utah. If you take a look at it, the strategy here is that we're, they're trying to do three things, and we use the website to accomplish it. Number one, increase more smaller families, 24 to 35-years-old families, to move into the area. Number two, they want to increase high-technology startup companies to move to the area itself. So, as you saw over here, rather than having just simple pictures rotating, we're utilizing video. In 13 seconds, you get a sense of feeling of what it's like to live there. When you look at the rest of the site, you notice there's floating navigation at the top. This is for senior citizens. They feel as they go through the website, they're never losing control to get to where they want to go. Every city wants to show off what it's like to live there, what it's like to work there, what it's like to play there. I might not live there, but I may want to go there to walk your trails or go to your stores, things of that nature. So, there's different focus area that can give them that sense of feeling of what it's like to be there. When it comes to calendar and news, right, everybody thinks that stuff is boring. So, the whole idea is less text, but more engagement, a creative way to show off upcoming events without having a, a super-large list. News areas, where, this might be something funny that you haven't heard about, but you probably recognize doing it yourself. When you look at news items, you see a cool picture, you click on it, and you don't even read what the title is. They're more interested on what's this picture's about. So, when we associate pictures with news items, there's a 33% increase that they'll actually read the news item itself. So, these are usability features that we've done testing on and are proven in the industry that we'll be implementing into your website. Again, from the homepage, you want them to get to anywhere in the website within two to three clicks. So, sometimes we'll put in these touchpoints here to get to those areas, again, right from the homepage. If there's special areas you want to call attention to, we can have a special panel for that. Report a problem, pay your bills, permits, pay a ticket. So, that's the action center. And then, economic development. What can we do to, if someone is just interested in developing in our area, let's have a special center for there. We can have available resources, economic data, find the site, top industries, quality of life. In this one area, they get a sense of feeling of what's really happening in the area. This is St. Petersburg, Florida. So, this is a little bit of a different type of site. Heavy information, but also a bit tourism-oriented, to bring more attention to the city itself. Great panels of information, not too overbearing, so they can get to where they want. Again, here's the touchpoint area here that we've done for them. This week in the news. This is called the topic slider. If you feel there's a lot of different items of interest for the residents, rather than cluttering the homepage, you can add on new components here whenever you feel like it. Most city councils are worried about the 24 to 48-year-old resident. They're the ones that you want to get inspired to participate in government. We interviewed them, and the reason they worked is because they said, "The city's not responding to us the way we want to be responded to," which is social media. So, we'll have a whole area that, if you want, you can put in Instagrams, connections to Facebook and Twitter. We can integrate your news center, so that when you put up a news item, it'll simultaneously update your city's Facebook and Twitter simultaneously. So, this way, you'll be very connected. We'll have what's also called a social media sharing app, so that way, residents can pull information from the website and actually pull it into their LinkedIn, or pull it into their Facebook, or Pinterest, and then communicate with their friends and family members or colleagues. You know, especially with LinkedIn, "Hey, here's some properties we were thinking of, maybe moving our new company headquarters to." And they're sharing it with them. So, now, your new website's going to be, as Stephanie indicated, a multi-layered communication center for every different facet. And I went over my time, but I'm, I'm sure you're very encouraged and you see our excitement on this project. Stephanie?
Thank you.
So, here's a look at our proposed timeline. Uh, should the city council approve the contract tonight, uh, the next step will be to hold the initial meeting of the website committee and Revised Software team. Uh, next steps are site map creation, um, homepage design approval, inter-page design approval, um, content editor and web administration training, uh, content review and approval. content editor and web administration training, content review and approval, final approval, and then finally, launch date on January 3rd. Cost for this project, it was budgeted $80,000, and the final project cost is $74,300. And we can take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any questions for web design? Pretty self-explanatory, I think. Thanks, you did a great job researching. It's always great to see a local company get a bid, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Baker?
I'd like to move I-5 Standard Purchasing Resolution 8 Best Value Award Website Design Services as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Baker, supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we approve I-5 Standard Purchasing Resolution 8 as printed in the agenda packet. Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations and good luck. We're looking forward to it. Long overdue. Thank you. Well, it's a great night for the city of Troy, because I get to introduce I-6, which is the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Recommendation for Naming of the Park Located at Town Center in Liverneys. I see Kurt Povenseep, Director of Public Works, along with Barbara Knight coming to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Exciting indeed. This is just another step closer to what I think our residents have been waiting a long time for. Just a brief overview before I turn the mic over to Ms. Knight to comment on her contribution, if she'd like, is back in March of this year, we did adopt a new policy that kind of streamlined the naming of parks and amenities. Through that process, it shortened the window for the opportunity for public to give suggestions for the naming. And we did that in June and closed it in July, and consequently held a public hearing at the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting, where they took into several considerations, including Ms. Knight's suggestion. But, so, moving that resolution forward, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board is making a recommendation for the park, but I just want to mention that we do have, this is much broader scope, the new park is going to be the host of the dog park portion, which we've seen consistently a demand, at least within the top two for the last two parks and recreation plans, so that's exciting. But the property is 16 acres, and the dog park portion is not going to take the entire 16 acres, so we really have two opportunities here. We have an opportunity to name the entire park, and we also have an opportunity to name the amenity, such as the dog park portion of the park. So, the recommendation that's being forwarded to you by the Parks and Recreation Board only did consider the entire park, but the final authority lies in this body to make the naming of the park happen. Ms. Knight was very generous in combination with other efforts that we've had in the city to make this a reality. Her contribution of $1,000 in memory of P. Terry Knight is making this a reality, and we are hopeful to be open spring of 2017. And I will turn the mic over to Ms. Knight.
Thank you. Good evening, Barbara.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me. I'm thrilled to give this donation to the city in which I was raised. I chose to raise my children here, and my husband's business, Somerset Financial Group, has been here for 40 years on Big Beaver Road, and I'm the proud continued owner of that business. And I couldn't be happier to do this for the city of Troy.
Thank you. I know I've, I've been talking to Barbara for a long time about this project, and I can't be more excited tonight than to see this happened. To donate $100,000 towards this project, I think is such a generous contribution. And, you know, attached to the agenda this evening is Terry's resume. And when you take a look at what he has accomplished and what he's done for this city, it's a no-brainer for me. I can't thank you enough for stepping forward. Without you, we wouldn't be here tonight talking about having this park. Your donation is making this a reality, and I can't thank you enough for doing that, especially on behalf of Terry. I know it means a lot to you. And I'm just looking at his resume right now, Distinguished Citizen of the Year 2011, Member President's Advisory Board, Walsh College, Member Board, Troy Downtown Development Authority, you know, on and on and on. What a great man he was for the city, you know? We're all very proud of him. And thank you again. Any other comments or questions? I have a resolution that I'd like to present when the time is right. Are we ready? And I've had, I've had the opportunity to talk to Barbara about this, so I know this resolution is with her blessing. And for those that don't know, Terry was about as proper a man as you'd ever, never saw him without a tie. Everything had to be impeccable, right down to his name. And a lot of people don't know that Terry's true official name was P. Terry Knight. And, so I want to recognize that in this resolution. So, I'm going to read a resolution, hopefully I'll get some support. So, resolved that the park shall be named P. Terry and Barbara Knight Park. And further resolved, the Dog Park Amenity shall be known as the Daisy Knight Dog Park.
Support.
All right. So it's moved by the chair, supported by Councilwoman Hoderick and Councilman Baker, that the park shall be named P. Terry and Barbara Knight Park. And further, more resolved, the Dog Park Amenity shall be known as the Daisy Knight Dog Park.
Thank you.
Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, and thank you again, Barbara, for your generous donation to this project. It's going to be beautiful.
Thank you. My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is I-7, the M.I-75 Widening and Reconstruction of Adams Road Water Main Relocation Change Order Number One and Budget Amendment. And I'll leave the rest up to Steve Van Det. Good evening, Steve.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item I-7 is a request to approve the relocation of a 12-inch asbestos cement water main at Adams and I-75 as part of the I-75 reconstruction project. And as you know, construction began on I-75 just recently, between South Boulevard and Auburn Hills and Coolidge in Troy. And this work will include replacement of the northbound and southbound bridge over Adams. The northbound will be done this year, southbound will be done next year. And the city's water department maintains a 12-inch diameter asbestos cement water main under I-75 in the northbound lanes, approximately northbound lanes of Adams Road. And this water main is over 50 years old. Asbestos cement, or AC pipe as it's called, was very, very popular in the 1940s, 50s, and 60s. And in the industry, it's commonly referred to as paper pipe, due to its sensitivity to external vibrations and bending stresses. The product does perform well, but it's best to stay clear of it whenever you're doing any construction work, or you may risk causing a main break. The design life of AC pipe is about 50 years, so this water main has exceeded its design, expected design life, however, it's still performing well. With the I-75 reconstruction now finally taking place, there's no better time to replace this main under I-75 than now. And M.DOT's stance on replacing the water main is that because it's not a direct conflict with the demolition and the building of the bridge, that this work cannot be included as an I-75 cost. M.DOT considers this work to be a betterment or an upgrade in the city's water system, and therefore, it would be done at city expense. The cost of the water main, including contingency, is $125,500, for which we're asking Council to approve this additional work. We do have concerns about the close proximity of the water main to the bridge construction. The water main is about 12 feet away from the bridges, and during demolition of the abutments and the footings, jackhammers and other large equipment will be used, causing vibration that may cause the main to break. Paul Trosper, our Water and Sewer Superintendent, is here to explain the adverse consequences of a main break in this particular location.
You know, and this water main is actually a feed for one of our isolation zones. We actually isolate this city into districts so that the pressures stay consistent. And this is the main feed for the Section 6 area for water. Now, we can feed them from different directions, but those valves are closed, and because of the elevation in that area, which is one of the highest areas in the city, if we fed it from, say, Coolidge Road, they wouldn't have the pressures that they really require up there. So this main is very crucial to keeping that area in a very acceptable pressures range. And if we lost it because of something happening with this construction, it would be a very catastrophic problem. And my concern is that if we do not relocate this now, say, maybe it does make it through the construction, and then they have a brand-new bridge, and say, maybe six months from now it breaks, or a year from now, after the bridge is completed, that now we're under this brand-new, you know, bridges they just spent millions of dollars on to go in there and try to fix something that was 50 years old in the first place. The rest of this water main that is on each side of the bridge is sooner or later going to be earmarked for replacement also. So this is the best time, in my opinion, to get in there, do it in the right of way of the I-75, and get this out of the way.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Just curious, how far are you moving it?
Actually, what we're proposing is to directional drill it. It would be to the east of the bridge, still in the right of way, but it would be away from this construction, and it would be with HDP, or a high-density polyethylene pipe, so that it's really not susceptible to the vibrations and the damage that could be caused. We had the same problem down here on Waddles Road when they did this storage unit. There was some 12-inch AC pipe in there that, at the time, they felt was not a problem, or not in conflict with their project, and it turned out to be. And I don't want to see us in that same situation again. So, if we move it, and it's basically going to align it with the rest of the water main, because the rest of the water main is out of the road, but because of the bridge design, they actually brought it out into the road and took it back over. So it's going to align it back with the rest of the existing water main and take it outside of the road, and it'll be east of the bridge then.
So instead of 12 feet, it'll be like 40 or 50 feet?
Yeah, it would probably be in that area. And the main concern would be, it's going to be away from the demolition of these piers and the construction of these piers that are going to go in. It's going to be under the I-75, obviously, but it's going to be, you know, deeper, and it's going to be basically put in a location that is no conflict with any other demolition and reconstruction that they have to do.
And a new material.
And a new material.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Baker?
Just, obviously, you're ready to go with, I mean, it could be done quickly, prior to the construction?
Yes. We've actually talked with Dan's Excavating, who is doing the whole project, and they would prefer to get in there and get it done before they even touch that bridge, just because they kind of understand the whole situation also. They know this, they've dealt with this asbestos main pipe also, and it is very susceptible to damage if it's disturbed.
Any other questions? Councilman Henderson?
Two quick questions. One is, if, how much more expensive would it be if we just rolled the dice and let M.DOT break it? You break it, you buy it. If that doesn't pan out, how much, what would it cost us?
You know, I really, I don't know how, I could even answer that. My main concern would be the damage it could cause to a new bridge, for instance, if the bridge was already completed, or the disruption in service to the people in Section 6 that would be without water or with limited pressures while this was being repaired. During this construction, once this water main's in place, the connections on the end can be done at a very, you know, timely manner, like approximately five or six hours timeframe. And I actually looked at the maps, and it can actually be done and only disrupt one resident's water while it's being connected.
The second question is, it doesn't sound to me to be a safe situation with water running through in asbestos concrete line.
Actually, the water mains are actually very safe for water. The inside of them are cement-lined, and the reason they really don't make, it was, it's a great product, to tell you the truth. They can handle extreme pressures, from internal pressures. Externally, they're very susceptible to damage if things are disturbed. But the interiors of them are probably some of the cleanest water mains you ever see. There's really no asbestos that you would even come in contact with the water. The reason they quit making it was the manufacturing part of it was the concern.
Councilwoman Abraham?
Just a comment. I really want to commend staff for the foresight of looking at the situation, understanding what could happen, and acting in very proactive fashion so that we don't have a water main emergency right in the middle of demolition of the bridge. That would be catastrophic on many, many different levels. So I appreciate it, and I would certainly support this resolution. I guess, maybe my more general question, is there anything else in the weeds that we need to be worried about with this I-75 expansion? It seems like the city keeps getting caught.
We do have one other crossing. It's to the east of the bridge, and it's a 16-inch concrete pipe, and it's deep, and it's really in no conflict with any of the work they're doing.
Thank you. Any other questions? Would we like to move the resolution? Councilman Henderson?
Move I-7, M.I-75 Widening and Reconstruction, Adams Road Water Main Relocation as printed.
Support.
By Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve I-7, the M.I-75 Widening and Reconstruction as printed in the agenda packet. Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda, I-8. Not such a positive issue this evening. Letter of resignation from City Councilmember Campbell. There is an A, B, and a C to this resolution.
Mayor, would you like me to introduce it?
Yes.
Yeah, please.
All right. Unfortunately, we have received the resignation of Councilmember Campbell, who will no longer be eligible to remain a city council member. He has submitted a resignation effective probably as of 12/01/2019. And so, there are three resolutions. The first one is for you to accept his resignation, and that has to be done at the meeting after, immediately after the clerk received the letter of resignation, so that would be tonight. So that is your first resolution. The second item is, and that is just to declare that the seat is vacant, and to accept the letter of resignation. And then the second one is a procedure, and we have modeled a procedure that we used the last time. It's a little bit different, but unfortunately, it's a very short timeframe under the charter. You have to name a replacement within 30 days. So it's a very short period of time. We also have the Labor Day holiday in there. So, we have suggested a timeline for you and suggested a procedure, which is to accept applications until Friday, the 9th, I'm sorry, the 9th, I believe that that's a Friday, but it is September 9th. I'm sorry, the 9th, I believe that that's a Friday, but it is September 9th at noon. Then all your applications would be ready, and then they would all be given a letter or a number, so that if they ask for confidentiality, the names would then, the applications would all be submitted to council for your consideration, and then hopefully, there would be a special meeting the week of the 12th. It looks like we have either Monday or Tuesday as our only option, if you want all of the members to be there. And that would be to narrow them down. Again, the identity of the applicants, if they've asked for confidentiality, would not be disclosed. At that point in time, you would do the narrowing down based on the number or the letter designation. Then those candidates would be asked, you'd narrow it down to potentially five finalists, and then those five finalists would, you'd contact them, make sure that they are still willing to participate in the process, and then you would have an interviewing process that would have to take place at your regular meeting of the 19th, unless you had another regular meeting, but your time is really short. So really, there's not much of an opportunity for that to happen. So if there is consensus for council to follow that procedure, which we did use before, there is no action necessary on B. It was just to explain the process to council. And then the third item would be to schedule a special study session so that council can do the vetting and come up with a list of final candidates.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
City Attorney Bloom, I have a question. Is this a six-week appointment, and it would be up at the general election, or is this a year and six weeks?
No, thank you. The deadlines have already passed for them to run in November, which the charter says that it has to be either a November or an even August election. So this position would remain for the entire, the individual would remain for the entire remaining term, which would be November of 2017.
Councilman Henderson?
As I recall, when we had the special mayoral election, that was in May. Is that, so is that not, does that vary from this procedure?
It is different, because this is covered by the charter. This says when there's a letter of resignation, that would fall within this, and it is very specific. It does indicate that it's either an even-year August election or an odd November election.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Can you go into details on the resignation, or is that confidential?
What?
Why he resigned?
Yeah, what he indicated is he's no longer going to be eligible. I believe that he is purchasing a house outside of the city.
Right.
Councilman Henderson?
One other question on timing for, so we appoint somebody in a month or within a month, and then they have to run again in August, correct?
They run again November of 2017.
Got it. Okay, so it would be at the regular time when?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Correct.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
So because he moved out of the city, he's not eligible to finish out his term?
That is correct.
Okay.
Nice try.
Just trying to streamline things here.
Are there questions for City Attorney Bloom? I did note on the yellow sheet that Councilmember Hoderick is going to be away, and the only dates available for her are the 12th and the 13th of September. And I think it's imperative that everyone is here. Are there any other conflicts at this point? I know everyone's quickly looking at their calendars.
Monday's the 12th?
Monday's the 12th, Tuesday's the 13th.
That would be preferable in my book, if it's possible.
Monday?
Yes.
Okay, we don't need to do B. Is that correct? Well, I'll move the resolution A and C with the special study session for September 12th, 2016. Support.
Just for clarification, I wanted to know what time it was. I know that many times you called them at 6:00 PM, so.
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock. Support. Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve Resolution I-8 A and C with the special study session for September 12th at 6:00 PM. Further discussion?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Hoderick?
I just want to say I'm going to miss Councilmember Campbell. He's made tremendous contributions to this community, volunteering, crossed paths with him throughout the time, we raised our girls together, and it was a pleasure to serve with him on council. He did tease me mercilessly, and if you were watching, you might have thought that we didn't get along, but we actually got along very well. And I appreciated his service to us, working with him, and the service he did for city employees and the residents of Troy.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
You weren't the only one he teased. He, his wit was beyond compare, but he's a great guy, and his wisdom will be missed also.
Councilman Baker?
He's not dead. We can still, no, I will say it. Jim, if you're watching, we still love you, we can still, you can still tease us, but no. I very much enjoyed working with Councilman Campbell for the time that I have. He did tease mercilessly, but I believe that he had the best interests of Troy always in mind, so.
Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, I ran and was elected with Jim, and there were times where his humor got in the way of our relationship a little bit, but no, he's a great guy. He served with Lincoln in Lincoln's cabin. Hopefully, he's watching, but no, he was, he's a great guy, a great addition to the council, full of wisdom and wit, and he'll be missed.
Councilwoman Abraham?
I've had the privilege of sitting next to Jim for nine months or so, and I can attest to some of the comments he'll make under his breath, if only the microphone could catch them. But I go back a few more years with Jim, helped him get elected the first time around, fought for the library before that, and really came to know that underneath that really dry wit was a very compassionate man, a very intelligent person, and someone who could get to the essence of an issue within seconds and make it very clear, this is the problem that we're trying to solve. And I'm going to miss that.
Thank you. Yeah, I wish Jim was here tonight for his last meeting. I reserved my comments. Hopefully, I'll have a good personal conversation with Jim, but he will be missed, that's for sure. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Any council member wish to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Support. By Councilman Henderson, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next are memorandums and future council agenda items. There are none submitted this evening, so we will move to public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. And I will call on David Ashland, Troy resident.
I seem to be making a habit of coming up here. I want to talk about the resolution to waive the attorney-client privilege, which was rejected at the last meeting on August 8. I was very disappointed in the votes of four council members to say no to waiving the attorney-client privilege on the communication that examines the articulated concerns regarding the city manager. Again, all residents should be able to see this communication. Let's look at government transparency as defined by Bellipedia. I want to write, read to you the definition they have. Openness, accountability, and honesty define government transparency. In a free society, transparency is government's obligation to share information with others, with citizens. It is at the heart of how citizens hold their public officials accountable. Now, making the document available to all would not put city employees at risk. Names of the employees would be redacted, removed from the document, and their identities protected. But if the document is not open for all to see, we won't know what other issues were raised by the employees. Employees will feel their openness, honesty, and courage have simply been ignored. Why would you not eliminate a client attorney privilege? There obviously were reasons. Perhaps you thought that the additional report content was so trivial and inconsequential that the general public shouldn't be bothered. Let's not waste their time. Or maybe you thought that the report is too complex for the average citizen to understand and comprehend. Only council members can comprehend its complexity and put it in proper perspective. I don't agree with either of these positions. Troy citizens are intelligent. Maybe some of you thought the report reveals information that might reflect negatively on some individuals involved in city government, or negatively on some governing groups in city government, perhaps council, perhaps some other governing group within city government. Perhaps careers, even political careers, could be impacted negatively.
Mr. Ashland? Thank you. Your three minutes are up. Thank you, sir.
I hope some member of the prevailing side of that vote will think about reconsidering and bringing that motion back for reconsideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I will call on Ryan Johnson, Troy resident.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council persons. So obviously, I've been here a couple times before already. We went over some details on what we thought was a process of assessing foreclosure houses that weren't meeting the merits of the law, which is to find the true cash value in every case possible. I don't know, we went over the details of, there was actually a recommendation from the Michigan Tax Council, that a taxing authority here should be covering 20% of its field every single year with physical inspections. That's the recommendation from the Michigan Tax Council, which governs the processes which this is supposed to go through. City of Troy does not do that currently, and it leads to some of these situations like myself and my wife have run into. I think when the city is not meeting the recommended process, that when an error comes into being caused by failing to meet that process, that the city actually has a greater responsibility to help correct those errors when it comes time to the appeal process at the city law. And really, the crux of why we're here every other two, every other Monday, trying to present this and deal with this, is because that's not what happened. So we, so what we, what we ran into when we attempted to address the issue is, on three distinct points, we ran into an interpretation of law by the city assessor that I don't think was correct. And if, I know we're not going to get through too much more of it in my minute and 24 left, but I'll try. So basically, we suppose, our position is that whenever you have a city assessor that does, uses the automated system of assessing right now, which is to basically use comps in the local area to assess the value of a house sight unseen, that they don't know all the facts of that house. It's because they don't, they haven't seen it, they know what the condition is, they're just using a computer algorithm to show what the comparable values are of what they deemed comparable houses. And when you have a bank who has bought a house, or not bought a house, but ended up with a house through the foreclosure process, oftentimes, the people in ownership of the house there actually don't know much about the house and its condition. They very much rely on the realtors that they contract with to handle the process of moving foreclosures. And on that premise, we went to appeal our situation on the, our assessment at the July Board of Review. Now, the July Board of Review was clearly an opportunity to correct this problem, but that didn't happen in the July Board of Review for a number of technical interpretations of the law that were meant to basically just push the issue off into the Michigan Tax Tribunal issue.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Sure.
Next, I'll call on Amnoye Johnson, Troy resident.
Good evening. I'm Amnoye Johnson, the wife of Ryan Johnson. I will continue what he left. Have to shave the boy. We can provide complete bank renovation project paperwork and receive and contracted data for all of the cited expenditures. On March 11, 2016, I visited the city of Troy to submit our principal resident paperwork. We did not realize that the foreclosure in 2015 would uncap the tax for 2016. No one told us, not our realtor, not the seller, the mortgage company, either title company at the closing day, or even the city of Troy assessing office on March 11. In late June or early July 2016, me and Ryan received our summer tax bill, saw it was much higher than we had anticipated. Then we went to the city of Troy assessing office to figure out what happened. This is when we learned that the taxable value has uncap, and then the city had reassessed the property with an asset value much higher than which the property could support. When trying to address the city assessor initially, we were told that there was nothing we could do, that we would just have to pay those higher taxes and could challenge the assessment the following year. He did not mention the possibility of addressing the issue with the July Board of Review, or the possibility of appealing to MTT. We were only appraised on the possibility of the board through a conversation had with the city manager. We appealed to the July Board of Reviews based on what we believed to be a mutual mistake of the fact in regards to our situation. We will explain that below. At the July Board Review, the argument of a mutual mistake of fact was not allowed to be heard. The assessor used what we believe to be a very improper interpretation of the law to deny our case to be heard on its merits, meaning we can now only seek resolution through a MTT hearing, and we must wait, I'm told, approximately 16 months for the process to be concluded. This, we believe, was a matter that could have had and should have been heard at the July Board Review and result there. We believe the Troy city assessor, by refusing to inform us of our rights of appeal when initially asked, and his persuasion over the July Board of Review to dismiss the case on floor, technical merits had shown a com- on floor, technical merits had shown a complete disregard.
Johnson, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. Are there any response, reply from council regarding comments this evening? Next on the agenda is council referrals. There is a council referral this evening from myself and council member Abraham. And to get it on the table for discussion, there are three A, B, and C resolutions. And I will move A, N1A, and do them all separately. Proposed resolution to incorporate city manager plan of action into the city manager Kishnik's employment agreement. Whereas, as allowed under the Open Meetings Act, the Troy City Council has had an opportunity to meet with city manager Kishnik in closed session. And whereas, as a result of these closed-session discussions, the city manager presented for consideration a city manager plan of action to city council on July 25, 2016, but this document has not yet been formally reviewed and approved by the Troy City Council. And whereas, the Troy City Council is in agreement with terms of the attached city manager plan of action and agrees to incorporate this plan as part of city manager Kishnik's employment agreement. And whereas, the Troy City Council may need to meet in closed session considering other measures that could be acted upon at a later time or could be included in the city manager's plan of action. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the attached city manager plan of action is hereby incorporated as an addendum to the city manager's five-year employment agreement, which was approved on May 18, 2015, and is effective immediately. Be it further resolved that Detroit City Council shall adjourn into closed session after addressing all other business items of this meeting as permitted by MCL 15.268A and H, MCL 15.243G. Support. Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Protem Pennington, that we approve N1A as printed and read into the record. Discussion. Councilman Henderson.
Mayor, we've all had opportunity to look at the plan of action, if I can say, in closed session and out of closed session. We've all had opportunity to respond with our comments, review everybody's comments, and I don't see any reason that we should adjourn into any further closed sessions regarding this matter. So, my recommendation would be approve it with an amendment to strike the closed session.
Is there support for that?
I would support that. We can vote on that. See if it passes.
City Clerk Dixon, did you get that? That would be an amendment to the resolution, correct? You will discuss that and then vote on that?
Correct. So, what we will be voting on first is the amendment to strike the going into closed session portion of the resolution, and then we'll vote on the resolution as amended, which does not include the reference to the closed session.
Correct. So, moved by Councilman Henderson and supported by Mayor Protem Pennington that we approve N1A and striking the last paragraph that we shall adjourn to closed session, correct? Discussion on that. Councilwoman Abraham.
This resolution came about after the last council meeting. Clearly, there wasn't agreement at the table. Mayor and I had some discussion offline, and I think we agreed to disagree. Perhaps we will never see eye to eye on that matter, and that may be okay. But now, it's incumbent on us to try to move forward where there can be some agreement, and that resolution reflects that discussion. Councilman Henderson made reference to the fact that we saw this document in closed session. There were many things discussed in that closed session. I can't say... There was a lot of... As much attention to it as there might have been, and offline feedback had been provided. And in that feedback, there are differing points of view on several matters. I think it is incumbent on us to have that dialogue so that we can understand where there are differences, so that we can move forward as a body, so that we can reflect our code of ethics of encouraging all council members to speak and have that dialogue. So, I am disappointed that we can't have further discussion. Frankly, I'd be comfortable having the discussion here at the table, but wanted to have some courtesy, and maybe do it behind closed sessions, come to some agreement. Maybe the plan of action would get updated, maybe it wouldn't, but at least we'd have the opportunity to have a dialogue together instead of pieces of paper with feedback on it.
Thank you. If it's okay, I'd like to piggyback on Councilwoman Abraham's at this point. And I support what Councilwoman Abraham has indicated. And I think we are going to agree to disagree on our vote last week. What I want to say about that is that I appreciate Councilwoman Abraham bringing that resolution forward. She did it in a professional manner. She did it with what she thought was best. I looked at it only one way, and that was, should we violate the attorney-client privilege? And I totally do not want to ever do that. So, we did reach out for each other. I understood that we needed to find some compromise, and Councilwoman Abraham and I had a great discussion. We decided to partner on this resolution. It's a compromise between the two of us. I agree with what she said, and I think if we are going to move forward, we have to have a little bit more dialogue. So, I support that. It's difficult to talk about things that are said in closed session because we're not allowed to talk about that. Just as in my opinion, we're not allowed to talk about attorney-client privileged documentation. So, I don't support striking that we'll adjourn. I think we do need some more dialogue so that everyone gets an opportunity to speak. I support the plan of action, though, that is on the table. I disagree with Mr. Ashland that it's not a plan of action. I believe it is a plan of action, and I think you'll see parts of that plan of action are going to take place this evening. And we are going to continue to bring items back to the table that are reflected in the And specifically, we are addressing what we consider emergency purchases and blanket purchases that have come to light since we've started our dialogue. The city attorney needs time to review the ordinance and to make recommendations to us, so that will be coming soon, I hope. And there are other parts of the plan that are going to continue to come to this table in an open forum as they are addressed. So, I support the resolution that Councilmember Abraham and I first put forward, and I think we should, as part of a compromise, adjourn to closed session. So, I will be voting against the addendum to the resolution. Further comment? Councilman Henderson.
Just a point of reference here. You know, my intent is not to keep others from speaking about the plan. My intent is to try not to go into closed session again, because that has caused so much aggravation in this whole process for everybody. And, you know, if you want transparency, let's talk about transparency. So, I'll vote for the amendment.
Appreciate the...
Protem Pennington.
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation and the dialogue between you two. Thank you.
And I think the most important point for me is to try and do away with this cloud that's out there that people think that we went behind closed session and didn't come up with anything. As is evident by this plan, this was done on July 25. We haven't met since then. So, this was done July 25 with the intent to put this plan out there and follow the plan. So, we had to deal with a media request, which we did. We had to deal with another resolution that was presented. So, this is just part of the process that we came up with in closed session, July 25, 2016. We haven't met since then. So, this is the plan that was discussed. We need to continue to have a little bit more dialogue, and then let's hope we can put this thing to rest. Councilwoman Hoderick.
I would be voting against not going into the closed session because we've worked very hard through this process. It's been a difficult process. I think you saw that last meeting. We've consented on the plan, as inelegant as it is today, and really, that is a tremendous thing that we got this far, but we haven't had a chance to finish the work we need to do to move forward. This council has done a lot to work together as a team, even when we disagree. The discussion that needs to continue should be, in respect for what needs to be discussed, we should have an opportunity to do it behind closed door. It does not mean, though, that what we would agree upon does not be brought back to the This is an important juncture. This has been difficult on everyone involved, including staff. We owe staff and the residents and businesses our best, best effort. And I think what Mayor Slater and Councilwoman Abraham proposed to us here, I'm very grateful that the two of you came together and proposed it. I'd like to continue to lock arms with those of us here. This is fantastic city staff, great integrity. We need to keep doing our work to have their backs, and I think we need that dialogue.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Let's have the vote on the amendment, Ms. Dixon.
Okay. Mayor Slater?
No.
Councilmember Abraham?
No.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
No.
Mayor Protem Pennington?
Motion fails. And I understand, Councilman Henderson, I don't want to go back into closed session either, believe me, and I don't think anybody really wants to do that. But is there any further discussion on N1A? As read. Mayor Protem Pennington.
I would like to move N1A...
I did that already.
Oh, you did?
I did. Yeah, we're just kind of at the discussion part right now with that.
I'm all right with it.
Any further discussion? City Manager Kishnik, you support this plan of action and its attachment to the contract?
I'm in full support, and I'm in full support of the staff of the city and working together with this council, just like we've done for the last three and a half years. I'm in full support, and with this being at this juncture, with me as a city manager and that being the issue, I take full responsibility, and I look forward to going forward with this plan.
I hope Terry O'Parker doesn't mind me mentioning her name, but she's always said to me that they try to be fair and balanced, and I think that's what we're trying to be here, too. We're trying to be fair and balanced. So, could we have the vote, Ms. Dixon?
Yes, and just to clarify, what you're voting on right now is the actual original resolution that was on the agenda without any changes made to it.
Correct.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is N1B, and I will read that into the record. It's the proposed resolution to recommend city manager approval of revised whistleblower complaint procedure. And before I read it, I would just like to indicate this is a result of the plan. Whereas, the city of Troy's Labor Council recommended revisions to the city's administrative policy under the Michigan Whistleblower Protection Act. And whereas, the city of Troy council and city administration agreed that this administrative policy should be reviewed and updated. So, now, therefore, be it resolved that Detroit City Council recommends immediate administrative approval of a revised whistleblower protection act policy that is compliant with Michigan law and also encourages transparency and directs that the revised policy, once approved by city management, shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting. Support. Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve N1B, the proposed resolution to recommend city manager approval of revised whistleblower complaint procedure as printed and read into the record. Discussion. Councilman Baker.
I just want to say that I think that this revised whistleblower policy is much clearer than what we had before and provides a clear path for any city employee, or city employee, I guess, to feel comfortable in knowing what the process will be for any complaint they bring and the protection they'll receive as a potential whistleblower. And it also addresses some of the issues regarding council and how that would be handled with us, as well as city attorney and city manager, and I think it's a great updated memorandum and policy.
Councilwoman Hoderick.
What we learned through this process was that this did need to be updated, and we learned it the hard way. It was particularly tough on staff members, and it was very tough on us. If there's a silver lining in this process, it's that we figured out we needed to revise this and update it into the current cultural norms in terms of whistleblower policies. This is a very, very good thing, and I feel very good that we tackled this as quickly as we did. And again, to want to commend the employees that did come forward originally. It was the right thing to do. The process has been messy.
The process has been messy because we needed to do this, and we didn't know it. We didn't realize that we needed to update this. So I'm really glad that we have this moving forward.
Councilman Harrison.
Just one item in the policy is the path that somebody takes. And it's with regard to, you know, should somebody need to go around our direct reports, city attorney, city manager. I think in the policy, it states that they can go to any member of council. But, you know, I'm thinking about that, I think it's probably a more clear path and probably a more direct path if they approach the mayor directly. Is that -- well, one point of contact rather than the shotgun approach is kind of what my thoughts are. I don't know if I'd get any support on that, but...
I think my recollection in talking to Mr. Lang briefly about this was that the law says that you can go to anyone, basically. And I don't think we probably don't have the authority to do that. I don't want to put City Attorney Blum on the -- but that's the impression that I got that there's case law, that -- I'll let you speak.
Yeah, Mayor, you certainly want to make sure that there is an avenue for persons to report, you know, any violations. I would indicate that this policy, you're not actually approving this policy because I would like Mr. Lang to have a final look at it. And unfortunately, he's not been able to do that because he's out of the country. So that's why you're approving the concept of it, you're not actually approving that. So that is something that I will have him look at if there is a desire to have just one point person. And, you know, if that were to be the mayor, I can have him look at that if there's an interest in it.
You know, quite honestly, I don't feel comfortable with that. There could be reasons not to do that. And I feel very comfortable it should be all seven. Councilman Baker.
As an attorney who's done some work in employment and labor issues as well, while I understand and respect the idea of having a single point of contact that's very clear, from a practical standpoint, it's always better to have more potential options to report to, in my experience. And the reality of that is some people may feel more comfortable going to one or the other of us than one specific person or that one, the mayor might not be available, and then there's an issue anyway. So I think from a practical standpoint, it's best to keep it as any member, so long as, and I know we're not voting on the language, but once one council member finds out, the rest of us find out so that we're all on the same page. That's key to this, in my opinion.
Councilman Henderson.
Yeah, that was my biggest concern is that, you know, we, again, once one finds out, all should find out, and it should be expedient. We shouldn't wait, you know, two, five, a week before we catch on to information of this nature, so...
Councilwoman Abraham.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the language in the proposed whistleblower policy was within two days or two business days?
Two business days, yes. That's the proposal right now.
I feel comfortable with the resolution as it was presented. And just to reiterate, this is a recommendation. Policies are distributed through the city manager's office. Any further discussion? I think this wasn't the old whistleblower act, like written in 1997 or, I mean, summary. And that's why it was so important for us to be, part of the plan was to review all city policies, and there is a plan in place to do that. Correct, Mr. Kishnik? There's a review of every policy ongoing at this time, correct?
It's already underway. I don't want to say every policy and ordinance, but looking at the charter, the code, and the administrative resolutions as they relate to purchasing, financing, personnel. And then there's a separate strategy to look at old and outdated, needed to be updated, other code issues.
Any other discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is N1C. And I will move this resolution to get in on the table. It is the proposed resolution to allow Pennington Collision to remain on the list of eligible vendors. So whereas Pennington Collision has provided automobile repair services on a competitive basis to the City of Troy since the 1970s. And whereas throughout the years, Pennington Collision has frequently quoted the lowest repair prices and is well-known for its professionalism and its responsiveness and abilities. And whereas the owner of Pennington Collision is also an elected city council member. And whereas Section 6.12A of the Troy City Charter requires that in order for there to be any possible business relationship between the city and a business in which a city council member or his or her immediate family has a precourioriary interest, the other city council members must agree unanimously to pass a resolution making the business eligible to conduct business with the City of Troy. So now, therefore, be it resolved that the Troy City Council declares that Pennington Collision is eligible to conduct business with the City of Troy as allowed by the Troy City Charter, Section 6.12A. Support? Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve N1C, the proposed resolution to allow Pennington Collision to remain on the list of eligible vendors as printed and read into the record. Before discussion, would this be the proper time for Mayor Protem Pennington to recuse himself?
Yes, yes. This is something that all the remaining members of council would need to vote on, and it does need to be unanimous for all members other than Mayor Protem Pennington.
Can I be part of the discussion?
It's probably most appropriate that you refrain from discussion or any participation.
All right. Did you want to move to recuse yourself from the vote?
Yes, I would move to abstain from the vote.
I'll support that. Moved by Mayor Protem Pennington, supported by the chair, that Mayor Protem Pennington recused himself from the vote on N1C. The vote on that, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pennington?
To recuse yourself.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now discussion on N1C. Councilman Henderson.
Just a clarification point. By unanimous, is Councilman Campbell part of this board or not part of this board at this point?
Well, we will need to be coming back once you have a new city council member that is appointed because it does need to be something that is effective for each council, for each board. So perhaps if you make the language state that it's effective as of midnight, 12:01 tonight, that that would cure the fact that Councilmember Campbell is not here.
Are you still supporting that?
Oh, yeah, I still support it. I'm sorry. Yes, support.
Good question. This is another example of something that has been going on for a while that staff and council and administration didn't know that we needed to do this. So this is just another part of trying to take care of and tie up some issues that needed to be corrected. As we know, Pennington Collision has been around a long time and does great work. And the good thing about being on the list is that you don't get preferential treatment. The bid goes to the lowest bidder. So it's not like you can even give preferential treatment if you wanted to. So I don't see as that as a conflict myself. And quite honestly, if I was having my car repaired, as I've done many times because of teenage drivers, I take my vehicles to Pennington Collision, so it's my two cents. Any other further discussion? Councilman Henderson.
Yeah, I've known Mayor Protem Pennington for a long time, and it's usually because of car accidents. But I think everybody in the city knows Pennington Collision because of the work that they do and just community-driven, you know, with football, kids in school and all that. He stepped up when we needed him to step up to play a role on council. And, you know, I think had he known that this would adversely affect his business, I think that decision may have been a little bit different. But I commend him for community service and providing great, great service to the City of Troy at low bids, so I'm in support of this.
Any other discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor -- sorry. Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. We will continue to bring forward parts of this plan for discussion and potential resolutions. My final comment is that this council speaks through its resolutions. We do not speak individually, although we all have our opinions, and they're great opinions, but we speak through our resolutions. Next on the agenda are council comments. Any council comments? Councilman Baker.
Just want to remind everybody, with kids going back to school very soon, please drive safely on the streets. There'll be a lot of school-aged children walking in the neighborhoods and on sidewalks. And also, if you have trees and shrubs that overhang onto sidewalks, please cut them back as they should be because I don't like it when kids poke their eyes on low-hanging tree limbs on the way to school. So please do that.
Thank you. Council comments? Mayor Protem Pennington.
Two things. One is appreciate the support of my fellow council members. Like Dane said, we have fixed police cars for the city since the '70s. One of my fondest early memories was sitting with my brother in a police car, and we pulled it to the front of the office door in the aisle, and we turned the lights off, turned the lights off inside the building. And as kids walked, came by on their bicycles, we would flip the lights on, get on the loudspeaker. We had a good time. Obviously, we don't do that anymore, but appreciate everyone's support. The second thing is, with a heavy heart, I want to report the passing of Sarah Gunther. Sarah was the daughter of Steve Gottlieb and Jennifer. We attended her funeral. Sarah was only 23-years-old. She was an engineer and a rocket scientist for -- what was the name of the company?
SpaceX.
SpaceX, thank you. She worked for Elon Musk. She was a -- we only got to know her for a short time, but she was a rising star, and she will be missed. If you'd like to send a card to Steve or Jennifer, I'm sure that would be greatly appreciated. And also, they had on the program, if you'd like to make a donation in Sarah's honor, please consider supporting one of the organizations that supported her, the MD Anderson Cancer Center and the Dear Jack Foundation. At Sarah's funeral, they, at the very end, she wanted a song sang, and this will probably be the only time that me and the mayor and Edna will sing "Dancing Queen" by ABBA out loud. But it's what Sarah wanted, and the whole crowd did it. And she will be missed.
They don't -- Sarah lived next door to me, and I don't know, I don't understand it. She's a wonderful, wonderful young lady, and Steve asked us to get the mail for them the last four days because they needed to get away. And I think he's going to appreciate that you asked for cards, but we got the mail for them, and it was two grocery bags full of cards. But I know it would be greatly appreciated. She was a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful person, and she'll be missed. Any other council comments, maybe something upbeat? Next on the agenda are reports. Any council comments on the reports that are on the agenda this evening? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. So we will take a break and rejoin ourselves in the boardroom for a closed session. Thank you for coming this evening.